Good morning. Welcome to the Bucks County Commissioners Meeting of September 18th, 2020. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by David Greer, our new Director today. They are all here for their 20-year award. So I'd like to start with Scott R. of Purchasing.
(Inaudible)
Kramer, who's from the Department of Corrections. Excuse me.[476.48][476.48](Applause) If you'd like to say something, that's fine.
Just want to say thank you, that's it.
Well, thank you.[488.12][488.12](Laughter) Wait.[490.12][490.12](Laughter) Love that he has to go back to work.[493.12][493.12](Applause) Next, we have Mike Harrison from Adult Probation.[499.12][499.12](Applause) You're usually not short of words.
You know I can't pass up a microphone. I just wanted to say thank you. I appreciate this recommendation, recognition today. And also, I'm so grateful that you carve out time to do this every month, to acknowledge the public service dedication of so many employees here. It's been an honor to work with so many great folks at the county agencies, the row offices, court departments, and particularly my department, Adult Probation and Parole. We are a group of, we have a group of extraordinary people who do amazing work every day, and I'm just so proud to call them colleagues. So, thank you. And lastly, if I could just say, anybody listening or watching today that's looking for a career or a career change, who wants to make a positive impact, you didn't pay me to say this, did you? Who wants to make a positive impact on our community, check out the jobs board on buckscounty.gov. There are always opportunities where you can come join us to help make Bucks County stronger, safer, and more healthy. Thank you.
Thank you.[566.79][566.79](Applause) And I'm going to apologize if I get this wrong, but Christina L. DeCesaray from Human Services Mental Health Department?[578.54][578.54](Applause)
Good morning. I'd like to read something if I could. Good morning. My name is Christina DeCesar, and on September 20th, 2024, I will be celebrating 20 years of dedicated service to the constituents of Bucks County. It has been an honor and a privilege to serve its residents through my various roles at children and youth, behavioral health, and developmental programs. Instead of celebrating this milestone on Friday, September 20th, I will be striking unpaid with my fellow coworkers from SEIU 668 in our quest for fair wages, affordable healthcare, and protection of our retirement benefits.[623.41][623.41](Applause) I am exceptionally grateful to the county of Bucks for allowing me to remain employed for the last 20 years. Having stable employment and fair wages has allowed me to raise four children as a single mother. Today, I'm here to remind you of all the hard work done every day by the people sitting behind me, the sacrifices that we make on a daily basis to serve our county residents, and why we are deserving of a contract that will allow us to be the healthiest and most productive employees. I will start by asking the county, what salary, healthcare, and retirement benefits would you accept to put your physical and mental health on the line daily for decades in order to serve our county residents? Would you have a table thrown at you while you were pregnant by a client as you remove their children from their home? Would you stand in a freezer for 30 minutes in a state correctional facility during a lockdown? Would you have four security guards stop a client from assaulting you at court? Would you return to work two days after your child passed away? That's only my story. Never mind the unique stories of hundreds, thousands of workers who have dedicated decades of their professional lives serving and protecting the most vulnerable residents of Bucks County. I'm here today to ask you, to implore you to have fair and reasonable negotiations with SEIU 668 in a contract that reflects the best interests of your employees and clients alike. In my 20 years, I have worked with some of the most vulnerable populations of Bucks County. Every day, I talk to families desperate for help and services. Every day, I'm the business of giving people hope. On Friday, when we stand on a picket line, some of those calls for hope may go unanswered. The time is now to give us hope by negotiating a fair contract that will allow us to continue to do the great work that this community deserves. Thank you.[770.01][770.01](Applause)
Joan Lilly Miluski, Human Services Mental Health and Developmental Programs.[779.69][779.69](Applause)
I just want to say thank you.[788.12][788.12](Applause)
Jeanette C. Weaver, Finance.
Good morning. It's amazing how, when I started here as a fresh-faced college grad, I never expected to be here 20 years, but it has been a wonderful experience. The opportunities afforded to me have been truly a blessing, and I can imagine how easily it would be to be here another 20 years. So, thank you.[808.75][808.75](Applause)
Although she was unable to be here today, I would ask that everyone have a round of applause for Barbara H. Peck from the Prithmonetary, who would be 30 years if she could be here today.[824.13][824.13](Applause) Thank you. This is also National Recovery Month, and so we'll start off with Commissioner Harvey with the proclamation.
Thank you. Whereas the focus of Recovery Month each September is to celebrate people who make the journey of recovery possible by embracing every person, every family, every community. And whereas more than 1 million people in Pennsylvania are affected by substance use disorder, and is estimated that more than 43,000 Bucks County residents are impacted. And whereas throughout Recovery Month, people become more aware of the reality and hope of recovery, and learn about treatment and recovery support available in their community to help them achieve their goals. And whereas with the support of Pennsylvania Recovery Organization Achieving Community Together, PROACT, as well as other committed groups, those impacted can embark on a journey of improved health and wellness. And whereas observing Recovery Month improves the lives of those affected by substance use disorder by putting a positive face on recovery and educating communities about how every person can be part of creating a caring society that recognizes and supports those in recovery and encourages those in need of recovery support services to seek help. And whereas this month, we will see two events honoring Recovery Month, PROACT Recovery Walk Works 2024, in which champions of recovery fill the stands of the September 11 Philadelphia Phillies game, and PROACT Recovery Walks 2024 on September 21st, where thousands will walk in recovery, for recovery, in Philadelphia's Navy Yard. Now, therefore, do we, the Bucks County Board of Commissioners, hereby proclaim September 2024 as Recovery Month throughout the county of Bucks. In doing so, we commend PROACT's leadership in organizing Recovery Month events and being there for our community throughout the year. We encourage all residents of Bucks County to take part in programs and events that support Recovery Month.
Thank you. And here today, we have Jennifer King, Executive Director of PROACT, Kit and John Gouringer, participants in the Family Resource Program, and Eileen Criski, Bucks Family Recovery Resource Center Coordinator. We invite you all up. Thank you.[955.61][955.61](Applause)
Thank you. And I know you have a packed agenda, so we promised to be brief, but the urgency of Recovery Month is really upon us, and we're delighted to be here today. And thank you for proclaiming September Recovery Month in Bucks County. I think about the work of Dr. Claudia Black, who did a lot of work around supporting children when substance use is in their family. Because, as we know, substance use disorder is a family disease. And I'd like to make the case today that not only is recovery a family project, but it's a community project. And we get to, here in Bucks, be part of a community that does the work to create an environment that supports people in recovery. What Dr. Black said was teaching children these seven Cs. So I didn't cause it, I can't control it, I can't cure it, but I can take care of myself by communicating my feelings, making good choices, and celebrating myself. Those are really, it's a really concrete and easy thing for kids to wrap their heads around, the seven Cs. But those are the tenants of how a community embraces recovery, and Bucks does that. Thank you for the support you've shown to our programs and the programs of my fellow providers. We know that, here in Bucks County, our commissioners understand that substance use is a disorder, understand that we can all play a part in reducing stigma and making a community that lets people recover and thrive, that we can teach people that they can be part of saving lives by carrying Narcan, and that they can be part of celebrations that say you belong, your recovery is important to us, and we are going to work to break down our own stigma and our community stigma. So to that end, I'd love to have Eileen Criski just say a little bit about what the Family Resource Program, the Bucks County Drug and Alcohol Commission supports our Southern Bucks Recovery Community Center. And through the ARPA dollars, we were able to start a Family Resource Center there. So Eileen has been working diligently and so inspiringly to build it and strengthen that program. So, Eileen?
Thank you, Jen. Hi, everybody. My name is Eileen Criski, and I am the coordinator of the Family Resource Center in Bucks County at PROACT. Just like Jen said, what the Family Resource Program does is we teach the families how to communicate better, how to establish boundaries, how to take care of themselves, because we have to be strong to be able to help our person. What we offer in the family program are two support groups a week, on Tuesday and Thursday evenings, and also a family education program, which is a three-part series. We talk about the physicality of addiction, we talk about how addiction affects the family, and then we, the third part is we talk about different resources that are available to the family. And also, we practice different community, positive communication skills. So that's our program. In a nutshell, it's, people have really changed through this program. And so I have Kit and John Garringer. They are two of our participants, and they're going to talk a little bit about how their experience is with our family program. Thank you so much.[1158.58][1158.58](Applause)
Hello. I'm Kit Garringer, and I'd just like to say thank you for offering this program with PROACT and recognizing recovery. We, John and I have been participating in the family education program, and we also go to one of the family, family and friends groups, and we work with other people to learn communication skills, because we've learned that addiction is a family disease, and the family can really help each other and each member of its family to recover from this disease. So while John and I are working on our own recovery, we can also help our son in his recovery. So we're really appreciative of everyone that's had anything to do with this program, especially Eileen. Thank you.[1205.83][1205.83](Applause)
Thank you.
And I'm John Garringer. One of the specifics, the total pragmatism that we learned from Eileen, has gotten us through several crises with our son. And I can't thank them enough that even though we have all these books, other meetings that go to, they actually helped, really helped. And I can't say enough about their program. And it's just a wonder. So I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.[1258.15][1258.15](Applause)
Okay, thank you.
He's just wanted to say something.
Jen, the people that just spoke, thank you, Jen, for PROACT, the good work that PROACT does. Diane Rosati, I know you're here somewhere, and Diane is our, our go-to drug and alcohol person for the county. She works for the commission. And recovery is possible. It is possible. A few weeks ago, I'm sitting in church for Mass, and a woman came up and sat next to me who I didn't know. And she said, "You don't know me, but 20 years ago, I called your office when I was state rep, and I had a son in a terrible addiction and didn't know where to go or who to call or what to do." And she said she talked to me, and I called her back, and the next day, I had her in a treatment center, one of the treatment centers here in Bucks County. And she just wanted to thank me. She said, "I know it's been 20 years, but my son is just doing wonderful, married, got a good job." I think she said she had two children, and getting him into treatment saved his life. So the work that you do, all the people that are working in treatment and working in recovery, and our employees here in Bucks County that are placing people into treatment centers and figuring out a way to pay for it, I mean, which is always a challenge and difficult, but they do such a great job here in Bucks County. But recovery is possible, and believe me, treatment works. Treatment is highly successful if you get the right type of treatment for the proper length of stay. So thank you for all the good work that you do. You're saving lives every day. And the commissioners and all of us here in Bucks County appreciate all that good work. Thank you.[1400.63][1400.63](Applause)
And our next presentation is perfect for Recovery Month. I can remember, before I was a commissioner, I had hoped that Bucks County would one day have a drug court, but one person made sure that happened, Judge Ray Boylan, and she is here today to talk to us about the Drug Treatment Court and has a presentation for us. We are so grateful that you did this and glad to hear from you today.[1426.65][1426.65](Applause)
If I stand like this, can everybody hear me?
I don't know if the camera can.
Oh, I don't care about the camera.[1440.13][1440.13](Laughter)
But there's thousands watching, so.
It would be a better place without me on camera. I thank the commissioners, Commissioner Marzegli, and the other commissioners over the years who have supported us in this endeavor. Our Drug Treatment Court consists of a Recovery Track and a Wellness Court Track, and it really involves the entire community in supporting this endeavor. I'm happy to say, thanks to Warren Grant, Ted Rice, and in the final line, Marge McEvitt, we just received another grant for approximately $2 million. Over the course, since we've had this court since 2010, we've received approximately $5.5 million in grants, and that's because of the collaborative work that's done in this county, and we are most grateful for that. Currently, we have 43 participants in Recovery Court, 33 participants in Wellness Court, and this grant will allow us to expand the Veterans Program into an evidence-based Veterans Court as well. We've had 296 graduates from the Recovery Court and two in Wellness Court, and there will be two today. So, which is great news. Our graduation rate is 67%. Don't be alarmed, there's so much paper, because I'm old and the print is big. I would like to acknowledge some, not all, of our partners, the Drug and Alcohol Commission, that Diane Rosati makes all things possible, including, I don't know where she is, but she is, as she says, we've been partners, and it is a great partnership, because she is, we now have drug and alcohol assessments on the day of court, in the courtroom. We send people out, thanks to her efforts and many others. We partner with Behavioral Health Developmental Programs. The Sheriff's Office has been a great partner. We are required to have a law enforcement representative as part of the team, and it's a great commitment to ask someone to be there every week to be a part of that, and the Sheriff's Office has made that commitment. We thank all the treatment providers with whom we work, there are too many to mention, all the residential programs, including the Village of Hope, Comans, New Found Freedom, and Recovery Houses. We acknowledge the work done with Career Link and the WOW Bus, which we use on a monthly basis, PROACT, SINC, the Credit Counseling Center, Danny's Ride, Advocates for Homeless and Those in Need, Holy Family University, Access Services, NAMI, and the Hub. We are working on meeting, working to address some unmet needs, the need for women's recovery houses, and I
Oh, I don't care about the camera.
But there's thousands watching, so...
It would be a better place without me on camera. I thank the commissioners, Commissioner Marsaglia and the other commissioners over the years who have supported us in this endeavor. Our Drug Treatment Court consists of a Recovery Track and a Wellness Court Track, and it really involves the entire community in supporting this endeavor. I'm happy to say, thanks to Warren Grant, Ted Rice, and in the final line, Marge McEvit, we just received another grant for approximately $2 million. Over the course since we've had this court since 2010, we've received approximately $5.5 million in grants, and that's because of the collaborative work that's done in this county, and we are most grateful for that. Currently, we have 43 participants in Recovery Court, 33 participants in Wellness Court, and this grant will allow us to expand the Veterans Program into an evidence-based Veterans Court as well. We've had 296 graduates from the Recovery Court and two in Wellness Court, and there will be two today, which is great news. Our graduation rate is 67%. Don't be alarmed, there's so much paper, because I'm old and the print is big. I would like to acknowledge some, not all, of our partners, the Drug and Alcohol Commission, that Diane Rosati makes all things possible, including, I don't know where she is, but she says we've been partners, and it is a great partnership, because we now have drug and alcohol assessments on the day of court, in the courtroom. We send people out, thanks to her efforts and many others. We partner with behavioral health developmental programs. The Sheriff's Office has been a great partner. We are required to have a law enforcement representative as part of the team, and it's a great commitment to ask someone to be there every week to be a part of that, and the Sheriff's Office has made that commitment. We thank all the treatment providers with whom we work, there are too many to mention, all the residential programs, including the Village of Hope, Comans, New Found Freedom, and Recovery Houses. We acknowledge the work done with Career Link and the WOW Bus, which we use on a monthly basis, Pro Act, CINC, the Credit Counseling Center, Danny's Ride, Advocates for Homeless and Those in Need, Holy Family University, Access Services, NAMI, and The Hub. We are working on meeting, working to address some unmet needs, the need for women's recovery houses, and I know Ms. Rosati is working on that as well, the need for long-term structured treatment for methamphetamine, and we do not have enough DBT providers available for people in this county. So we are working on those initiatives. You are about to see a video that was produced by Nusama Communications, I'm probably not pronouncing that correctly. That was also the result of a partnership between us, Brittany Jones, Billy Barnes, Marge McEvit, and Erin Sheever took the lead from our team in producing this video. Grant funds were used, reentry funds were used to create this video. And the importance of this video is that it is shown in the jail. Most of the people in jail will say, "Our treatment courts, because they're not easy, are a setup." And so one of the great purposes of this is to educate inmates at the correctional facility. I have to say at this moment that I am incredibly lucky. I love my job. President judges have allowed me to do it, the commissioners have supported it, and I work with an incredible team of people. They don't work nine to five. When there's a crisis, the team comes together to address it. I work with exceptional people who could do anything they want in life but have chosen this work, and I'd ask the teams to stand please, to be recognized. That's an order. I also would like to salute the people in recovery in this courtroom. Facing each day clean and sober is an act of courage. And unlike many people in the justice system, I get to see lives that are rebuilt, I get to see the courage it takes to build a new life in recovery, and that's also why I'm grateful for my job. At this time, I think we're ready to show the video.
With censor.
I don't think anybody ends up on Treatment Court because they had a bad summer. I had a repeated pattern of relapsing, I couldn't stay sober. The Treatment Court program absolutely saved my life. I mean, it helped me get my life back together and help me to stay sober and move on to the next chapter of my life.
So you have a judge that runs Treatment Court up in Doylestown. She's amazing. She's in our reentry coalition meetings. I think that that changes the game. When you have a judge who sits in these meetings and understands, then you have people who come to these meetings and share their story, and the first person they look at is that judge and say, "Thank you."
After going through the program, it's a relief, because I actually got to see a side of the justice system that I hadn't prior. They are there to help you, and for me, that was extremely refreshing.
In my opinion, it's the best thing to ever happen to my son. It was a cycle, and this broke the cycle. My advice would be to give it time, give it a chance.
Being willing and being open-minded throughout this program was something that really benefited me, not going into it with that mindset that these people are out to get me. Looking at the people that I know that have completed the program, it's pretty much the same story through and through, that it's a life-changing experience and that they were so glad that they took the offer and accepted the program.
I was working as a nurse in home care. I had found myself struggling with substance use disorder, and I found myself in trouble legally. I had never been in trouble before. I was scared, I didn't know what to do. My lawyer had mentioned the opportunity of Recovery Court. There were a few peers that I had known that were familiar with it, and when I mentioned it to them, their feedback was, "Absolutely do not do this program." I'm glad I didn't listen to those individuals. It was probably one of the best things that I've ever done.
The Bucks County Court of Common Please offers a voluntary Treatment Court program that serves two populations, individuals facing probation and parole violations, and individuals charged with new offenses who are sentenced to Treatment Court, or those who must complete the court as a condition of bail. These courts are designed to break the cycle of incarceration and institutionalization so you can lead a productive life in the community. They provide evidence-based treatment resources and support through a collaborative, community-based approach. This means that the judge, prosecutor, advocate attorney, and treatment providers work together to provide you a real opportunity for positive change. Bucks County currently offers several Treatment Court programs for individuals residing in Bucks County. We will review Recovery Court and Wellness Court tracks. You will experience ongoing interaction with your court team and receive attention to your educational and vocational goals. The programs take a minimum of 12 months to complete, and as you move through phases, you'll be given more freedoms. You have up to five years to complete the program. Recovery Court assists high-risk, high-need, nonviolent adult defendants with successful rehabilitation from the use of drugs and/or alcohol. The Bucks County Recovery Court began in 2010 and has a 65% graduation rate. Graduates of the program have been successful in many aspects of their lives, including getting jobs, continuing education, reconciling with family members, and living healthier, more satisfying lives. The Treatment Court approach provides a holistic approach that takes into consideration special situations that compose challenges, such as the effects that evolved from the COVID-19 pandemic and its aftermath.
So I think every part of Treatment Court is important, every aspect, down to the probation officers you have, and the judges, the resources that represent us, the support team you have, all that's necessary. Those who are battling addiction or sobriety, Treatment Court is the best way to go.
My way was not working any longer, and other people helped push me in the right direction. They guided me. And then my mentality changed eventually to just like, "I have to do this," or like, "I want to do this. Life is better this way." I mean, quite literally learned how to live being on this program.
My other option was to go to prison for four to 10 years. It's given me a life that I didn't think was possible after all of the damage that I had done.
Now, let's explore Wellness Court. Bucks County Wellness Court is a partnership between the mental health and criminal justice systems that addresses the specialized needs of individuals with a serious mental illness diagnosis. This approach is proven to reduce your chance of relapsing into criminal behavior and help improve your quality of life by establishing mandatory, comprehensive, community-based treatment and services.
I never admitted I needed the mental health help, but eventually I did admit it, and you guys were there for me. With being sober, I went from, "Maybe I will, maybe I won't," to, "I will never do it again." Honestly, it saved my life.
You have a good judge who understands mental health and drug addiction. For people who struggle with mental health, it saved my life.
If you are interested in participating in either Recovery Court or Wellness Court, please ask your case manager or attorney for an application. In Bucks County, we believe that Treatment Courts are a meaningful option to connect participants with the services and treatment resources they need to lead healthier, productive lives in their communities, while offering alternatives to incarceration, reduced charges, or reduced or terminated probation.
If you think Treatment Court might be right for you, talk to your case manager, discuss the benefits and next steps.
If I didn't take this program and I had stayed in the prison system, I don't think I ever would have gotten out. It's a program designed to help you stay sober and to change your life. You just have to be willing to listen and willing to do the work.
It's a wonderful program. It is very strict. However, it provided me with the most amazing support that I still have in my life, even today.
Now, today, I have my own place. I'm out of the legal system completely. I've had the same job for about a year and a half now that I absolutely love, and I have a great relationship with family that I thought I couldn't get back into good graces with, friends that had given up on me. You know, just a really great opportunity.
So you're just leaving? We want to thank you one more time for all that you've done. I wasn't sure if you had anything else to say, but thank you, and thank you, everyone who's worked on this. And our next presentation, Commissioner DiGeralmo will read the proclamation for, it is for National POW MIA Day.
Thank you. Matt, is Alan Micklin here?
Yep. Is he?
He is. It was difficult to get him here, though.
Alan, why don't you come up? And just before I read the proclamation, a quick story. I met Alan a few months ago, more than a few months ago, when I was out doing my almost daily exercising, doing a little run and jog in one of our local cemeteries, and Alan was there visiting a loved one in the cemetery, and he saw me running by, and he almost ran right after me and grabbed me and said, "I need to talk to you." And he brought this issue of the POW MIA flag to my attention and the attention of the other two commissioners, and it really is a great story, and Alan has done so much bringing attention to this. It's his passion, and his goal is to have this flag flown underneath every American flag, wherever that American flag is flown in the United States of America, he would like to see that POW MIA flag flown right underneath it. And this was, a proclamation was signed by President Jimmy Carter in 1979 that created this. So Alan, I want to thank you for your good work, and I'm going to read the proclamation from the commissioners right now. According to the U.S. Department of Defense, "Prisoners of War Missing Accounting Agency, more than 81,000 servicemen and women remain missing from military engagements dating back to World War II and stretching to recent conflicts. Three veterans from Bucks County are listed as missing in action, all from the Vietnam War. Air Force Captain Donald Kemmerer of Quakertown, Air Force First Lieutenant Walter Sigafus of Richborough, and Air Force Major Frank Parker of Quakertown. It is important that we stand behind those who have served our nations, and we do everything possible to account for those who have not returned home. Since 1979, the Third Friday in September has seen observances for National POW MIA Recognition Day held across the country. The National League of Families POW MIA flag, also known as the POW MIA flag, can be seen flying over the White House, war memorials, national cemeteries, post offices, and other locations, including outside the Bucks County Justice Center in Doylestown. The POW MIA flag has become an enduring symbol, bringing recognition to our courageous service members who have not returned home, and a reminder to family and friends that their loved ones truly are not forgotten. Now therefore do we, the Bucks County Board of Commissioners, Chair Diane Ellis-Marsaglia, Vice Chair Robert Harvey, and myself hereby proclaim September 20th, 2024, as National POW MIA Recognition Day throughout the county of Bucks. In so doing, we encourage all Bucks Countyans to remember those Americans who have sacrificed so much for their country, and to recognize the importance of the POW MIA flag as a constant reminder of America's prisoner of war and soldiers still missing in action." Thank you very much, and I want to turn this over to our Director of Veterans Affairs, Matt Allen.
Good morning, commissioners. I don't want to steal Alan's thunder, but I'll just go over a quick thing I wrote down. In 1971, Ms. Mary Hoff, who was the wife of U.S. military officer who's missing in action from Vietnam, she developed the idea to create a national flag to honor those U.S. service members who were ever prisoners of war or missing in action. The flag created by Newt Heasley, World War II pilot, this flag is black and white, as shown, of a gaunt silhouette, a strand of barbed wire, and an ominous watchtower. The silhouette reminded the creator of the stark image of Americans held captive under harsh conditions. 2,500 service members were listed as POWs or MIA from Vietnam. In 1979, President Jimmy Carter proclaimed the first National POW MIA Recognition Day, and in 1982, the POW MIA flag became the only other flag to fly over the White House besides the American flag. August 10th, 1990, Congress passed Public Law 101-355, designating the POW MIA flag in the Third Friday of September as National POW MIA Recognition Day. The 1998 Defense Authorization Act mandates the POW MIA flag be flown over the White House, U.S. Capitol, the Korean and Vietnam Memorials, the Offices of the Secretaries of State, Defense and Veterans Affairs, Office of the Director of the Selective Service Systems, and every major military installation, every post office, and every Department of VA Medical Centers, and national cemeteries. With the approval of the commissioners, we are going above and beyond all the other government entities and flying the flag on all county-owned properties that have American flagpole below the American flag. In the proclamation, it was stated that Frank Parker was one of the missing in action service members. In 1993, his body was returned home. The remaining two, Donald Kemmerer, who which we dedicated a bridge to in Richland Township, and Captain Walter Sigafus, whose brother here is present today with us, Senior Sergeant Major, who's still serving?
Retired.
Ah, retired. Still likes to wear his uniform from time to time. I'm going to have him speak next, and then I'll let Alan speak after him. So Alan?
Good morning, commissioners. Thank you very much. Appreciate everything that you do for the military veterans. I have to give a shout out to Congressman Mike Fitzpatrick. It was just my brother and I, and, you know, of course, we don't know what happened to him, but Congressman Fitzpatrick made a promise to me years that he would take me over to look for my brother. And a couple of years ago, just before Thanksgiving, he called me up, and he said, "Ready to go?" I said, "Go where?" And he said, "We're going to Vietnam, to Laos. They just found some more parts of the plane." He took me over there, and the congressman is digging dirt, looking for whatever, and the anthropologist said, "The only thing we can find is teeth. That's the only thing we're hoping to find, is teeth." And there was Mike digging the dirt and looking for that. So I give him so much credit for that, but I give so much credit for people who understand the military life now, and what can happen, and those that are willing to serve and leaving their families behind to take care of the families and take care of the kids and go to schools and things like that. So commissioners, thank you very much for this. I do appreciate it. Thank you.
Alan Micklin, he has been the thorn in my side. He has called me every single week since I've been in this position, but he has a mission, and he's not going to sleep until the mission is accomplished. So Alan Micklin.
Thank you, commissioners, for taking this under consideration. I greatly appreciate it. It's been an uphill battle throughout the country. Many of you I know quite well from previous engagements that we've been involved in. I just want to take a moment, and just by a hand raise, how many veterans do we have here? Okay. My second question is, and there is no answer that I'm really looking for, I'm only looking for you to look at the education that we give. Do you know what a POW MIA flag is? Literally, literally, what a POW MIA flag is? We fought for the right for every American to be free enough to fly and represent every thing that they honor or they back, flags of teams, organizations, and so forth. But how quick we forget the people that made this all possible. I think that this quest that I've been on has been quite an experience. The thing is that I found that we need to really look at our educational system. I'm a photojournalist, and I cover many school events. And speaking to students, they don't even know what it is. Don't even know what it is. Okay? So I'm not going to tie you up. Please help support this, and if you see a flag that is not flying a POW flag, ask them why. Thank you.
And real quick, with Recovery and Wellness Month, I just want to say that it is okay to not be okay, and I am looking for a driver, so I had to follow Mike's from probation suit.
Do you want to come up for a picture?
Yeah. Come on, Alan. Alan, come on up. Come on up. Nice job.
Very nice.
You're taking enough pictures, now you got your picture.
Yeah, I take enough pictures.
And then the other side.
Thanks. He'll find some other reason to call. Thank you. Moving to public comment, the first speaker is Andy Warren.
Help us, the chair, expedite the agenda. I'd be happy to switch places as long as I get my three minutes.
You can go now, that's fine. It won't make any difference.
You give this to the four of them, to the three commissioners and Mark? Thank you. Reason I offered that was, don't start my minutes yet.
Start it over for him, please.
Thank you. Reason I mentioned that was because of, I know the seriousness with which, having been on both sides of this issue, I know people in your position take it serious. Having crossed the picket line as a teacher, I know these people take it serious. This is not something to be trivialized. I wish you both will, and I didn't want to detract from that. Now we can go. My question today is with question number 3J on the agenda. I looked up TEC. I recall hearing of this, talking to it a couple of months ago, and I looked it up in the machine, in the computer, to see what it was about, and it says, "With TEC, looks like there isn't much specific information available for TEC located in Point Pleasant." So I drove up there yesterday to see what this property was. Very well-kept, very manicured, there were 10 cars in the parking lot, and no activity, but I'm sure there was stuff going on. I have three questions. One, concerning the specific $2 million we're giving today, what's the increase in clients from December 7th, 2022? What's the increase in service from 2022? And what's the name of the principal? And I ask that because on December 7th, the TEC was on Item 2E, was given $72,000 for a year. On October 18th, 2023, Item 2C, TEC was given $1,568,000 for a year. On February 21st, 2024, TEC was given $58,000. This year, four years, just within four years today, we're granting $2,324,000. My question, that's $4 million over the course of four years. What is it that has caused a contract to go from $73,000 on December 7th, 2022, to 2.3 million today? There must be a horrendous amount of increased services going on, and we ought to, as a taxpayer, I ought to be able to find some information. Now, the accompanied Sunshine Family or something with the families, which is similar to AA from what I gather. I'm not quibbling about services for families with problems, but as a taxpayer, we ought to know where, how, and why.
Ed Mackhouse from Buckingham, an engineer, scientist, engineer, taught for 10 years. I was in the ROTC for five years at Drexel University. I worked in the 80s, the Voice of America under Ronald Reagan. More ambassadors die at a higher rate than military generals. The job of the Voice of America is to present America in a positive light. America is only 4% of the world, but we have a lot of influence based on our respect for America and what we've done in the past. In the recent debate, the question was asked, "Are we better now than we were four years ago?" We are not better now. Kamala Harris could not answer that question. And we have workers here who won raises. Under President Trump, Biden and Harris made President Trump look like a saint, although he's not perfect. We became energy independent, and we were not a beggar nation. Biden has to go around beggar nations and Arabs for money, for oil. Oil makes us wealthy and able to increase, made us wealthy, able to increase the things. In the Biden-Harris debate, ABC whistleblower reported information, the control of a free country, we need to have the media able to explain things. Her brother-in-law, there was no question about her brother-in-law, Tony West, who's under indictment for stealing billions of dollars of American money. Americans need it. Supposedly, when they were elected four years ago, their campaign wasn't to give 10 million, take in 10 million illegal immigrants and take degrees from that. They promised prosperity. They promised the Green New Deal with increased energy. It didn't. Of course, it's a trillion dollars in debt with these windmills and stuff. Didn't increase our energy. President Trump made us energy independent the first time since World War II, so we had money to help American workers. We deserve it. We can't take in 8 billion people in the world, in America. We have to look after our own people, too. We wish everyone well. Our allies and friends in Afghanistan were abandoned, and the war, Robert Kennedy wasn't given a good chance, and the drug industry with vaccines didn't work so well. President Kennedy was an honest person like Trump and Vance, and they can give hope so we can pay the workers what they deserve. Thank you very much.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Christine Gallion. I have worked for the county for 28 years and been a steward here for 25 years with the SEIU, Pennsylvania Social Services Union. I will say that again, Pennsylvania Social Services Union. Our job is human services and public safety. We provide services for your mother or father in the Neshamni Manor Nursing Home. We provide support for your son or daughter struggling with substance use disorder or mental illness. We protect your children and the elderly. We are health department inspectors who go into restaurants and make sure they are up to code with food safety so you don't get sick. We are 911 supervisors. We are the department you give proclamations to at these commissioners' meetings, but then during negotiations, show us that we are of no value. I am an advocate. I advocate for myself, I advocate for my coworkers, I advocate for my clients. And anyone in this room who knows me knows I would advocate for every single one of you who is advocating for us. In all the years I have negotiated contracts, I have never seen anything like this, a county negotiating team who wants to take benefits away from us, and frankly, it's embarrassing. In 2020, PSSU union members worked with the county to weather the crises in our community throughout the pandemic, accepting smaller wage increases in light of the unknown, we all felt. We did that with the understanding that this contract would honor the work we've done for Bucks County and pay our goodwill forward. Unfortunately, Bucks County would rather gut our health care. Negotiators for Bucks County have repeatedly dragged out the contract negotiations process, and now union members have been without a contract for nine months. They've intentionally limited bargaining sessions, been reluctant to schedule discussions, and tried to manipulate the process at every turn. Bucks County union members have had enough. We will not sacrifice living wages for decent health care. Bucks County is among the wealthiest counties in the Commonwealth, and the people who work for Bucks County, who serve our residents and provide essential services such as health care, housing, food, and resources, should be able to afford to live in Bucks County and not struggle with our own health care, housing, food, and resources. In this political climate today, do you really want to be the commissioners known to have ousted the union? This union of public safety, and to be the first commissioners to force a strike this Friday, September 20th, 2024, do you want that to be your legacy? We are your public servants, we are your retirees, we are your taxpayers, and finally, we are your voters. We deserve a fair contract, and you have the ability to change the outcome. Thank you.
Hope Boyle. My name is Hope Boyle, and I have dedicated 18 years to working with children and youth in Bucks County. I was adopted in this building when it was the old courthouse. I grew up in Bucks County, and now I'm raising my own children in Bucks County. My job sounds simple, keep children safe. However, there is a multitude of roles I play in doing this, including making connection with these families at a horrible time in their lives. I continue to do my job because even after all this time, I believe people are resilient. I have hope that they and their children will be successful. These families are fellow neighbors and community members who need support and guidance. With that being said, every county employee offers just as much in the job that they do. Without all of us, the county would be diminished. We need all the moving parts to make our county and community run smoothly and efficiently. My fellow coworkers and I are more than qualified to speak about our livelihood that the county is trying to destroy. This is about protecting our health care benefits and the wages needed to support our own families. Bucks County wants us to take an unprecedented cut to our Health and Welfare Fund, jeopardizing critical benefits for members and retirees. The county mandated us to get COVID shots due to the concern about our own health. Now you want to cut our health care. What health crisis will be happening next? While the cost of living has risen, we have received the same mediocre raise for at least two contracts. Meanwhile, the county management has given themselves a substantial amount of raises over the past few years. We are unable to keep staffing levels at a full capacity and have many loyal and hard-working employees leave. This is a disservice to our community and the county. We will strike on Friday, September 20th. Workers have given the county commissioners and the representatives several opportunities to reach a deal that addresses our concerns, and now our only solution left is to withhold our labor. Solidarity is strength, and we are a force to be reckoned with. More than 99% of the union members rejected the county's last offer and voted to strike. Everyone is standing together to protect our health care and our worth for the hard work that we do. We will not be intimidated, and we deserve better than what is being offered to us. You have the ability to stop this strike.
Good morning. I would also like to say a few words supporting SEIU. I'm a retiree from Bucks County. I retired from Corrections. I did 31 years there, and during my time in Corrections, I worked very closely with all of the agencies and departments who the employees are represented by SEIU. My first 16 years, I was a union steward, and then my last 15, I was management. So I've negotiated contracts on both sides of the table. Several commissioners, several HR directors, several different law firms representing the county, financial officers. The players always changed, but the one thing that always happened is we always got a contract that was livable by both sides. And I'm assuming that probably 2/3 of the commissioners board here will be supporting the Vice President in her bid for the White House. It's the same Vice President who supports SEIU, the same Vice President who spoke at their convention as the keynote speaker. If you missed the speech, the transcript's on whitehouse.gov. She spoke about attacking the rising out-of-pocket costs union members are facing with health care. It seems like you guys are doing the opposite. You're trying to bully the union into accepting cuts that will increase their out-of-pocket costs. It sounds more like a play from the other candidate's playbook where, you know, him and Elon Musk want to tear up the unions. I just think it's time to respect your employees in Bucks County and give them a fair contract and get this thing negotiated. Thank you.
Union negotiations are pretty sticky, but I'm not going to get into it. I hope that they come to an agreement that's good for both sides. I actually would like to just be here to say thank you to the administration. I know that's probably almost an irony, listening to, you know, the union. But I know now why Bucks County is one of the best, if not the best, in the Commonwealth, the best county to be in. The services that we do offer are just incredible, and the commissioners are always thinking about how better can they do services. I'd also like to thank Chris Ballerini for the work that she did to find that money, that offered money back to the schools and the boroughs. that offered money back to the schools and the boroughs. And I appreciate your recognizing Recovery Month. As a member of the Board of Good Friends, I have to say that our main goal is recovery. Good Friends, if you're not familiar, is the only male aftercare house in Bucks County. It's supported by our Bucks County partners. So I appreciate that. And I think that's it. I think, and, oh, the Board of Elections. I'm hoping that people that have no faith in the Board of Elections work to try to solve the problem instead of being the problem. And so, thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you. Jensen Overberger.
Actually, Janine Overberger. I'm a supervisor with Bucks County...
I'm sorry, that's how it came up on the...
That's okay. I've been called a lot of things in my career. That's probably the nicer of them. But anyway, who am I? I am a supervisor of Bucks County Children and Youth. I have been in the field for, going on 26 years come January. I graduated Temple University. I graduated in the top 5% of my class with a degree in criminal justice. I graduated also in the top 5% of my class with a master's in social work and criminal justice. I hold a degree as much as you all do, if not some of the same as some of the people sitting up there. But somehow, we're told we're not qualified to speak in representations of our union and negotiations. So I'm here to say that we are qualified to speak. Everyone who is sitting in this room that works with me on a daily basis, whether that's mental health, children and youth, IT, parks and recreation, the health department, and the list goes on as we sit at the table, are more than qualified to speak. We are speaking on behalf of ourselves, our families, the clients that we serve every day. It was rather disheartening to see how we are looked down upon by this county as employees and how we are demeaned. I certainly hope that this county does not look at the people we serve who are in poverty, who need our services, who are very much dis-serviced by the public. Because if we, the ones who are serving those people, are looked down upon, I can only imagine what Bucks County looks at for the clients that we serve. And that greatly saddens me. We will fight. We will strike. We will continue to strike until we reach a fair deal for ourselves, for our families, and for the clients that we serve on a daily basis. Thank you.
Beth Curcio. Beth Curcio.
Under Public Law 108447, it is a federal law enacted on December 8, 2004, that September 17 is designated as Constitution Day and Citizenship Day to commemorate the signing of the U.S. Constitution in Philadelphia on September 17, 1787. Yesterday, we celebrated 237th anniversary. During the fiscal year of 2005, the Consolidated Appropriation Act instructs each federal agency to provide educational material concerning the United States Constitution to each employee on September 17 of each year, and provide each new employee with educational materials concerning the United States Constitution as part of their orientation. I hope the county commissioners took the opportunity to provide you with U.S. Constitution yesterday at your onboarding. I'm sharing additional educational materials today with this pamphlet titled "Back to Basics." We hope that you take some time to read that pamphlet, because the U.S. Constitution is under attack. The U.S. Constitution is what keeps our country sovereign. Last month, Rochelle and I presented information during a public comment on Bucks County's Vision 2040, was aligning with the United Nations Agenda 2030. Well, UN Human Rights Committee on 11/3/2023 attacked our Constitution in their published report. It lumped the United States into a report with communist nations like Iran, Kuwait, Korea, Trinidad, plus Venezuela. I know you're shaking your little head, Bobby, but please listen. The UN Human Relationship Committee reviewed our county's laws at the local, state, and federal level to see if it was following the ICCPR, the International Covenant and Civil and Political Rights. This is a global agreement ratified by the U.S. government in 1992 during the George H. Bush presidency. I told you what he did in 1991 last month. I had my dates right this time, Bobby. In the agreement, Bush reportedly committed the United States government to observe lots of the powers not found in the U.S. Constitution but are on the government's books. These unconstitutional powers we seem to live by were never delegated or created for the U.S. federal government to control in the first place. In our country, we have states that created federal government and enumerated a few powers to do it. Please note, the U.S. Constitution is the supreme law of the land, regardless of any treaty, statute, or agreement that gets passed by the presidential executive order or by Congress if outside those limited powers. The U.S. Constitution, in Article 1, Section 8, delegated 17 enumerated powers to the federal government. And in the Tenth Amendment passed 1215, 1791, states, "The powers not delegated in the United States by the Constitution nor prohibited to the states are reserved to the states respectfully or to the people." One example of this power is at the federal level, not delegated in the U.S. by the Department of Education. Thank you.
Rachel Porto.
Thank you. And it's Rochelle Porto. Thanks, Beth. The globalists in the United Nations, which we are funding with our two U.S. tax dollars, put this ICCPR report and its likes and dislikes of how the United States government runs its country. The UN acts as if the federal government can force our states to obey their ridiculous laws that they put forth aggressively and annually, like the Agenda 2030. That November 2023 report attacked our individual states' rights to determine their own legislative districts. They attacked our constitutionally-protected, God-given right to free speech and the right to keep and bear arms. The UN loves all things that the federal government implements outside of the rule of law. They love executive orders and federal statutes that add too many regulations that overburden the average American who seeks the freedom to pursue happiness. These bills are not bills the way they are supposed to become law. They are federal statutes. Under the supreme law of the land, U.S. Constitution, these acts are considered unconstitutional. Now, I know you're sitting there saying, what does this have to do with Bucks County? It has plenty. Why has the Bucks County called their Building the Future document Vision 2040? I did more research and found that Montgomery County also incorporated a comprehensive plan called Montgomery County 2040. The language used in these documents is the alignment. The UN Agenda 2030 is made up of 17 sustainable goals, development goals. In the Bucks 2040 document, it has that same resounding theme. The first time "sustainable" is used is on Page 6. Then Page 9 lists the goals that align perfectly with Agenda 2030. Number 1, equity aligns with Agenda 2030 with Sustainable Development Goals 5, 10, and 16. Sustainability aligns with Agenda 2030 Sustainable Goals 11, 13, 14, and 15. The resilience goal aligns with Agenda 2030 Goal 9. And the health and well-being aligns with Agenda 2030 Goals 1, 2, and 3. We are here today, again, to remind you that we are a sovereign nation and celebrated Constitution Day yesterday. These patriots from, the patriots from Pennsylvania and others sacrificed their lives, their fortune, and their sacred honor to give us this country. They fought against tyrannical governments, and we don't need to be involved, nor continue to fund tyrannical, globalist agenda with the United Nations. Thanks to the useful idiots in the federal government, the UN can sneak in the backdoor into our country through our county with beautiful publications that tell Bucks County residents that they are valued stakeholders in the future. So please, fill out this targeted survey and tell us how you want Bucks County to move forward. Well, we are. We want clean water, air, and land. We want our children and grandchildren to grow up in a beautiful county and country. We want our leaders to be responsible and act with fidelity as stewards over our taxpayer dollars. We want what the founders enshrined in state sovereignty over the federal government. When they usurp power, you reject it and nullify it immediately. Thank you.
Bill Everett.
Good morning. My name is Bill Everett, and I am an elected committeeman in Middletown Township. My topic today is the Pennsylvania State Directive for Logic and Accuracy Testing and a couple of useful websites. As you know, the LNA testing is a key process to ensure we have a successful election. The LNA testing document can be found in the Voting Systems Directive section on the www.TA.gov website. It's labeled "Directive on Logic and Accuracy Testing 3.0," issued March 7, 2024. It was recently updated. I respectfully request you to take a minute to outline how our Board of Elections utilizes this 25-page document to execute your logic and accuracy testing process to provide confidence to the voters that observe this meeting. In closing, I'd like to take a minute to point out two useful websites that you and voters observing this meeting should take a few minutes to review. The first one is www.jbs.org. This is the site for the John Birch Society. The John Birch Society is a nonpartisan civics and education organization. We are concerned Americans from many races, religious beliefs, and national origins. Since we were founded on December 9, 1958, we have been men and women of good character, humane conscience, and religious ideals who have worked together to safeguard the Constitution. Yesterday was National Constitution Day. Please take a look at the website. That's jbs, johnbirchssociety.org. The second site is wwwcongress.gov. Please take a few minutes to search for Bill HR 8281 and review the text of the bill. It is the Safeguards American Voter Eligibility Act, or the SAVE Act. This bill requires individuals to provide documentary proof of U.S. citizenship in order to register to vote in federal elections. It is getting voted on in Congress today. Thank you for your time this morning.
I wanted to just address the issue that Mr. Warren had brought up. There's 17 people, I believe, in that program. They are all extremely disabled adults who live there and cannot function without people taking care of them, much like a nursing home, that level of care. We have to do amendments periodically, so that may be why it appears that there is so much money. But it's a very important, expensive program that takes good care of people. And I don't know if our Director of Human Services, Rachel Neff, wants to add anything to that.
Thanks, Commissioner. I would just say that, first of all, our Behavioral Health and Developmental Programs Department, our administrator, we'd be more than willing to talk with you specifically about this offline. But as Commissioner Marcy Gallego just stated, this is providing round-the-clock residential care. And we also had to adjust for payment to the staff that are providing the 24/7 care as well, so that has increased. So we have done some rate negotiations with them and increased it. But again, the cost of care for older adults with intellectual disabilities is significant. So, and I'm willing to talk with you more about that with our Administrator of Behavioral Health and Developmental Programs.
Thank you. And I will just make a brief comment. I'm going to try to do this without getting emotional. I heard everything that was said today from our staff. This union, if any, is the most important to me. There are people who spoke who I thought I had helped over the years and reached out to, so it particularly hurts to hear some of the things that were said. But this is the first time that commissioners have ever gotten involved in a negotiation. And your union has been out of negotiations at times in the past since I've been here for two years and longer. So it's not unusual that it takes a little bit of time. But we have actually gone to negotiations, and we don't normally do that. That's how important it is. But the one thing I will tell you is that I know, because I've checked, the people who are your business managers and agents have not told you what we offered. And we offered financially the biggest offer we've given any union in Bucks County's history as far back as I can find. But I know they haven't told you what that is, and we have never suggested we would cut your health and welfare. I would ask that you ask them what the offer we made was, and if they won't tell you, you know what my email is.
Is there any other comments?
No, thank you for that. Just lots of questions, past couple meetings about Bucks 2040. The Bucks 2040 Plan was developed by our Planning Commission, you know, some of whose members may be here. So the issue of the Bucks 2040 Plan, a comprehensive plan is something that is mandated by counties. That's why Montgomery County has one, too. It's why Bucks County has one. It's why every county in this Commonwealth has a comprehensive plan. The idea of a comprehensive plan is to try and prepare for the future, you know? And preparing means, what's our road network look like? You know, or do we have adequate, you know, ways to incorporate, you know, bike lanes and walking paths and parks? What's our housing situation currently? How can we do things to make sure that we have enough housing for the future? The right kind of housing, not just numbers of houses. But do we need housing for people who are older? Do we need housing for people who are younger? It is looking at resilience, yes. Because if you haven't noticed, the past couple of years, this county in southeastern Pennsylvania has been hit by a lot of extreme weather events, which knocks out power lines, which damages stormwater systems. And so, are we building systems for our electrical, our water and sewer, our internet providers who are able to withstand increases in climate? This is literally what comprehensive plans do. And then try to get local municipalities to understand that, too, and, you know, take a look at their own comprehensive plans, which we do some of those. Some townships and boroughs do them on their own. Sometimes they contract with the Planning Commission to do it. But it's the same idea. And in every model, it involves asking the people who live in that community or that county, what is it that you want? What are you looking for? The survey that was done was actually the most extensive survey ever done for a comprehensive plan by this county. And it was also open to anybody who wanted to, you know, input data about what they wanted to see. Did they want to see more open space? Did they want to see, you know, changes in terms of, you know, is this county friendly for business? Is it not friendly for business? What would make it better? And so, all of those things were incorporated in the Bucks 2040 Plan. So I appreciate the work the Planning Commission has done. I know the Chair of the Planning Commission actually was very upset by the comments that he, this is the Chair of the Planning Commission, not the Executive Director, Mr. Stone, is the Chair of the Planning Commission, who was very upset by the comments he heard the last meeting and actually wanted to come today to sort of, you know, speak about it. We told him that we had a feeling this meeting would be, you know, a little packed in terms of public comment. And, you know, we appreciate his concern, but maybe hold off for a future meeting. So, you know, yes, are there commonalities in language between different counties? Yes. You know, does the United Nations sometimes look at future plans and developments and say, hey, you know, globally, and say, hey, maybe the planet should probably prepare for, you know, climate change? Yes. And, you know, it's a little ridiculous to assume that they wouldn't. Okay, so, but appreciate, again, the work done by our staff and continued to do by our staff. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? That would be the minutes of the August 28 meeting, as well as Items 1 through 22.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Moving to our regular agenda, which is with Behavioral Health and Developmental Programs. This is a contract with Magellan Behavioral Health of Pennsylvania and Newtown. And we would be approving a contract increase, an extension for Health Choices Behavioral Health Agreement, and allowing the signature authority for the Chief Operating Officer. And this is in the amount of $346,325,000. And which Cindy's here to tell us a little bit about this. Cindy Grezziak.
Thank you, Commissioners. Good afternoon, and thank you for giving me a couple of minutes to speak about the Health Choices contract. I will be very brief. The Health Choices Behavioral Health Program is the state of Pennsylvania's Medicaid program for individuals eligible for medical assistance and provides drug and alcohol and mental health services to folks in Bucks County. The contract starts with the relationship of a contract between the state and the county. It is a five-year contract with a three-year extension. It is a five-year contract with a three-year extension. Magellan Behavioral Health of Pennsylvania is our subcontractor managed care organization, and our contract in the county with them is the equivalent of a five-year contract with a three-year extension. When a contract is created, the revenue is estimated. We get paid per person, per month, or we call per member per month. And so when it's first initiated, we estimate what that dollar amount is. And so with the permission of the Commissioners in April, our Chief Operating Officer, Marjorie McKeavitt, wrote a letter to Magellan notifying them that we are extending our option to extend the contract with Magellan. So this resolution is to recognize that letter and to reevaluate, restate the dollars in the total contract of that eight-year period with Magellan. Any other questions?
Thank you for all the work.
Thank you for that, and is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Okay.
All in favor? Aye. Budget adjustments, Mr. Bascola?
Thank you, Commissioner, for your consideration this morning. Adjustment number 14 for the Law Department, adding an additional $278,000 to their operating budget to cover additional expenditures for 2024. This would be an adjustment to the general fund of $278,000.
Any questions for Mr. Bascola? Is there a motion to approve the budget adjustment number 14?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there a motion to approve the personnel actions for today?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Board appointments, Mr. Commissioner Harvey?
Yes, one board appointment to the Bucks 250 PA Commission, Ms. Caitlin Lucas, who will be representative for this commission who represents indigenous populations here in Bucks County. It's a new appointment. Her term will end December 31, 2026.
Is that a form of a motion?
It's a motion, yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and we have two other civics, the Garden of Reflection for $2,000 and the Youth Orchestra of Bucks County for $3,000. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Chief Operating Officers' Report.
Thank you, Commissioners. I'm going to try and get through this without being emotional, but I'm going to do this. Today, we say goodbye to a friend and a coworker, one who is about to embark on a new exciting chapter in emergency management. Yes, that is Audrey Kenny, our Director of Emergency Management. Audrey's moving on from Bucks County to Pennsylvania, to the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency, or as we like to call it, PIMA, affectionately, sometimes, sometimes not. While we will miss Audrey's incredible get-it-done skill set and infectious enthusiasm, we are thrilled for the impact she will undoubtedly make in her new role. Audrey's knack for solving complex problems and her unwavering commitment to bringing folks together has always inspired us. You've helped lead us through COVID, hurricanes, tornadoes, devastating floods, and a cyber attack, and much more. We thank you for your time, talent, and expertise, and for all that you have accomplished and done here in Bucks County and for its residents, but for your coworkers for over the past 15 years. Little break there, but we won't talk about that. Your presence has made a significant difference, and we are confident you will bring that passion and excellence to your next role. Best of luck to you on this journey, and remember, you will always have friends here cheering you on.
I'm sure.
That concludes my report.
I have two items to report. The Board held an executive session on September 12 to discuss labor negotiations in addition to its standing executive session yesterday, September 17, with staff and legal counsel present to discuss election security and pending election litigation, labor negotiations, and to receive confidential legal advice. Thank you.
Just real quick for Audrey, and I don't know if you remember, when I first got sworn into the job, I think you were the first person to come and see me and introduce yourself back in 2020, and you bought me a little walkie-talkie, and you said, "If you want to use this, you know, here's how to monitor," and showed me how to use it, and about two weeks later, I gave it back to you. But as we talked about in our conversation we had last week when we talked about you leaving, and I said to you at that time, the word "bittersweet," and this is a perfect example of why that word exists, because we are just all very sad to see you go. Thank you for all your good work, but we're all excited for you as well as you move up to Harrisburg and, you know, assume your new job. So please stay in touch, and again, thank you for all your good work that you've done.
Mr. Harvey?
Thank you. Yeah, certainly want to echo the good wishes for Audrey Kenny. You know, certainly one of the people, or again, similar to Commissioner DiRamo, you know, went down and took a tour very early on of the 911 Center, and one of the things I remember most and continues to this day, and I'm sure it never will go away, is the complete and absolute pride that Ms. Kenny has in her job and in the people who work for her. You know, she, you know, was always making the mac and cheese, you know, so she put peppers in it, which is probably not, we'll leave that alone, but, you know, it's probably not the best, but, you know, she eats her own. But no, you really have done a tremendous job here, and it was certainly sad to hear that you were leaving, but we understand the opportunity that you have in front of you, and, you know, it's one that you would be foolish to say no to. PIMA obviously has watched what you've done here, you know, and I guess there's two ways of looking at it. On the one hand, they could say, boy, she might be bad luck, maybe we shouldn't. Ever since she took over at Bucks, they've had tornadoes and hurricane and floods and all. But no, they've obviously seen your leadership, they've seen your competency, they've seen, you know, the excellence you bring to your job, and so, you know, we wish you well. And, you know, I'm not going to say that, I'm hoping maybe the new vehicle they give you at the state is a Jeep. It might not be. It could be a Bronco. It's probably, you know, I don't know, if their standards are high, they'll get you that. But no, I wish you the best. And the other thing, just to kind of switch gears, you know, just wanted to combat a little misinformation that we've been struggling with here in terms of early voting. For some reason, different news agencies have interpreted something over the past couple of weeks, and this is not just Bucks County, it's the whole Commonwealth, that Pennsylvania early voting was supposed to start on Monday. Completely untrue. Don't know where that came from. You know, the early voting has not started anywhere in Pennsylvania, and so, you know, if you have filed for a absentee ballot or mail-in ballot, you know, it's being processed. You can check on the Department of State website to see if it's been processed. If we already have it, you'll get your ballot. You don't need to fill out another form. I know I just got something in the mail yesterday from some third-party organization, you know, telling me to fill out my mail-in ballot, you know, application, which, you know, spared our staff and just put it in a recycling bin, you know, because I know the process. If you obviously still have time to register to vote and also to apply for a mail-in absentee ballot, if you choose to do that. We do have the on-demand voting, which will begin sometime in probably early October. You know, we're probably going through our ballots right now, making sure they're, you know, accurate. We sent them to the state, so they review them, and our process is continuing as it always has, standard step-by-step process. So we hope to do our testing next week, and then, you know, hopefully mailing ballots so that people will have them, hopefully, early October, definitely by mid-October. So, but no early voting yet, so if you do hear that report or hear people talk about it, you know, it's coming from the source here, the horses, something, you know, in terms of what's, what the actual facts are. So, thank you.
And I will also just say goodbye to Audrey. I know even Saturday night, you were taking texts from me at night, so we're going to change the job description, because I don't know how I'll get that otherwise, to add texting from me at any hour of the day. Thank you very much, and we appreciate your being here. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.